Bonsoir tout le monde.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting for September 3rd. I wish everyone a good back-to-school period, if you have kids still in school, or you know, grandchildren. As always, just a little reflection in recognition of the land acknowledgement. We are gathered on traditional territory and unseated of the Makma people. Their ancestors signed a treaty of peace and friendship with the British Crown in the 1700s. So, Mr. Clerk, we do have quorum. Everyone's here. There's Councilor Jean-Meng Galan, who's remote. We'll see her on the screen soon enough. In terms of any declarations of conflict of interest, are there any members of the council who would like to declare a conflict of interest for any items on the agenda today? Not seeing anything, thank you. Number four, approval of agenda. You have the agenda before you. I need a motion to adopt, to approve it. Moved by Deputy Mayor Sylvie Collet-Pudre, and seconded by Joel Depre. Any questions? Two, Councilor Peter Bro. Yes, your worship. If I can have the approval of the council, I'd like to add an item on your agenda. The Cornwall Road. Cornwall Road. Are you looking for a motion on the topic, or for some point for information? It's just a discussion on Cornwall Road. So we can put this under new items? Number 12, item 12. Or is it simply a question that you're looking for some exchange or a debate? It could be a debate. Well, put it under 12. I'm looking for my glasses. Here we are. Great. So that's one amendment. I would need the amendment to be adopted, approved unanimously. As with any time you're looking to change the agenda, you need unanimous approval. So, everyone understood, is add a point under Cornwall Road. Aye, contrary-minded, nay. One, no. So I'm sorry, Councilor Bro, you can ask the question under request for new information. Secondly, Councilor O'Millie O'Brien. Yes, thank you, your worship. I want to bring forth a motion tonight. I sent my information too late. I'd like to confirm that I would like my motion for the next meeting on the 16th, the next one. Yes, you can say it. Doesn't need to be on the agenda, though. Does the clerk confirm? You already put it in. Oh, okay. Thank you. So, on the main motion, the agenda, as circulated. All those in favor shall say aye. Contrary-minded, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. So, number five, approval of the minutes. Nothing to approve this meeting. Some will be coming up for next meeting, probably. It was a summer vacation, so there's a few delays. There are a few delays. Public presentations. There are no public presentations tonight. Terms of reading of correspondence, nothing there. In terms of reports from standing and special committees, there were no reports. That does vary from one meeting to the next. So somebody have a question? So, no financial report, no protective services, no police and fire reports, many were approved before. In terms of the CAO's report, it's my pleasure to introduce you, it's for the first time, Mr. Yves Leger. He is our new CAO. I don't think he has a very long report. He started today. So maybe you could say hello. Thank you, your worship. As his worshipper said, my report will be very short. I had the opportunity to meet the staff today, just to become familiar with a few files. Not all of the files that exist, not so far, anyway. I want to thank the council for their trust that you're conferring upon me to name me as your CAO. I'm always open to answering your questions. I'm available to work on any files that you would like staff to work with. Great. So, welcome. So, number 10, recommendations from the Southeast Regional Services Committee. There are none for tonight, but under unfinished business, we have two updates. First of all, for community services and recreation. That would come from Madame Belanger, I suppose. Ms. Belanger will be presenting a summary of these points, as you will. I'll sit then. You may. Good evening, everyone. I hope you had a lovely summer. I'm very pleased to be before you with a short report from the department. If there's any questions, please ask them, but I'll also have some questions for you. So, stay tuned. So first of all, our two policies on nonprofit organizations and cultural policy. We've just published them, actually. It was two, three weeks ago. For organizations and people in the past who have applied according to that previous cultural policy. Well, actually, you've already been advised and notified, so spread the word, please. It's at that time that organizations will be applying, or people who would like to take advantage of the cultural policy to help us to better orient budgets for 2025. And then we'll be able to have budgets that are better prepared. So, in terms of the trails, there's good news for the shoreline trail. It will eventually get to Alma. Alma, rather. I was called last week. We needed to develop our section of the trail. The last section, from Riverside Road to the pillar of the old Skodok Bridge. This year, we were mandated to do the design for this. So we already took the steps necessary to do the design for that section of trail. It's about 500 meters. And I was called last week to inform me that this year we would need to build that section. And we haven't actually finished design yet. We will be working together with Marc. Marc Leger, from the Regional Service Commission. That's the word I was looking for, yes. In order to be able to build that section. Why they need that section to be completed this year is that they have some machinery in terms of the design for the bridge that they need to bring there to assess the pillars on that old bridge. So for future construction. So to have a better vision on these pillars, you need to go from the road to the trail, and they can't pass, take the river to get there. So I said, well, there's nothing wrong with that. There's no choice but to move forward. If we don't do it, it will slow down a lot of things. So you'll be asking me, when will the bridge be happening? There's our good chances that we might see some construction next year, but it's only a chance so far. You could eventually, it might be in 2025, but for sure 2026. That is when you can certainly expect the bridge connecting to Skodok. Then, we developed a panel signage plan on the trails. People are telling us we need to educate people, we need to improve safety around speed. So all the signs arrived. We're going to sit with the superintendent. We're going to make sure that we properly identify the areas. We're going to do the locates. This is to put in those little sticks, the posts in the ground. We're all working together for this report. So yes, there's an educational component to be done on the trails with this signage to educate people that it is a shared-use trail. Watch your speed, and you'll see as of next week. Radar that will indicate what speed you're either driving or walking on the trail. That radar will be running for a year, and we'll see. And from then, we'll properly identify the type of programs that we could implement to ensure better security, better safety on those trails. Also, there's another section where there will be some construction. It's along Route 15. It's the new section that's made between Chesley and Riverside. So the exit by Riverside, well, the construction was not in compliance with the initial plan. It's very unsafe. We can't see people in cars arriving on the other side of the road. So in that way, we're going to reorient, realign the trail as it should have been done. And we're going to also redo that section to inform people that there is another section of trail that continues on the other side of the bridge at Riverside. Any questions so far? Well, ask them as you go, as you go. In terms of the items that she's covered so far. Councilor Joel Depre, thank you, your worship. In terms of what you just said. You said that the plan would be done as it's supposed to be done. It was a company that was not in compliance with the contract as requested, or... This is before your arrival. It dates back before your arrival. There was a post from MB Power that will stay there. Instead... Instead of going around it, they decided to go around it with the support of the former CAO. But it doesn't follow proper safety measures for people. There are so many close calls. I've had them myself. So we're going to make this part more safe. Councilor Janis Carmier, thank you, your worship. You mentioned radars on the trails. I would imagine that we're going to have some data after a year? Yes. Yes, it would be very interesting to be able to share this. Yes, it's a great idea. You could do some follow-up on the comments related to speed. And related to the electrical bikes as well. We'll better be able to understand. It's anecdotal for now, but, Councilor Peter Bro. I would congratulate you, Julie, for your work on the trails. And thank you for the update in terms of safety. About a year ago, there was even a motion to this effect, that we're going to buy bells to give to the electric bikes to notify people walking. I don't know. Was this done? In terms of a motion, I don't know. We could check. I don't remember it like that way. I know we discussed it. We talked about DEP having done it, and we might do it here, but did we do it as a motion? Well, I could say a little more about that. I do remember that discussion. However, we need somebody to educate people before they receive that bell. So that extra person, we don't have that person in the team. And I'll explain this a bit, our dilemma right now with the current staffing. And I'll go back to that in our report. But to have that extra person, well, we don't currently have that extra person. But we're looking forward to having that person for next year. It's something we're foreseeing for next year. Thank you. Councilor Ronald Carmier, thank you, your worship, and thank you, Julie, so far for your report. I regularly use the trails. The bell's a good idea, but there's challenges with these bells. Many people have headphones, and they're listening to music. The only solution? It's a good idea, but it doesn't solve the problem. Maybe part of the problem, but, Julie, you mentioned that we'd been asked, well, I don't think it's in the... I was not sure if it's 500 meters or foot more. Do we have money in your budget to do this? We currently have a surplus in this trail's budget. So you think it will be fine, perhaps? Perhaps. Maybe not. Because we're also doing that trail on the 15. You also mentioned that the bridge might happen in 2025 or 2026. Are you aware whether or not the financing is in place from the federal government? Yes. Marc just got some good news. He shared that it's going forward and it continues. Marc puts us in a good position. When Marc did his presentation, he showed us the Shadia region. I think that Councilor Depre was worried as where it would head on the CN Trail. He seemed to say... Have they been able to secure those lands to get to DEP? According to our friends in Skodok, it wasn't quite so obvious to go onto their land. Has it been secured? This is an answer I do not have. If you would like, we can always invite Marc. I'd like to see him again. He gave us some information. Mr. Mayor, your worship, it would be interesting to have him come before us again. He's certainly a great project. If we can finish it, people will really appreciate it, I'm convinced. It'll take the time it takes, but... I'd like to see it, see him, that's all. And obviously, once the track is established, the map is established, we can share it. We know where Shadia is, DEP. Where exactly where it's going to pass through, we don't quite know to the exact meter. Once we have more than 90% of the trail in Shadia complete, it will be... We'll just need to complete the rest of the section in Skodok. But it adds a lot of trail, just with the bridge for our users, and then they'll be able to get to Skodok. I'm really anxious to see this. You may continue. Great. In terms of recreation facilities, as you've requested, you asked us to do an assessment plan of our facilities. It's still underway. We're adding all of our inventory in terms of rec facilities. In terms of playing fields, this was completed this summer. There's lots of graffiti. But our play infrastructure is in good shape. But there's lots of repairs to be done in terms of landscaping, in terms of safety in our parks. Everything is fine in terms of safety. No worries there. Are there any questions, or shall I continue? So, Councilor Janis Carmier. I was a bit slower there. You spoke about parks. Somebody last year has talked about cameras. Have we put in surveillance cameras? It was under an uncompleted item, but it was actually completed? I think that we brought it before you in the last spring. Have we seen changes since then? Yes. In terms of graffiti, there'll always be graffiti. But in terms of vandalism outside of graffiti, it's much improved. And also loitering. Lots of improvement in terms of loitering as well, or there's less loitering. Councilor O'Millie O'Brien, thank you, your worship. The pickleball court, have you covered that yet? I should have put one, two, or three points. But I'm just on top of the list. Okay, it's coming up. So in terms of baseball, we renovated a baseball field. We started this in 2023. We completed this year in 2024. It is the EJR field. I can't say unfortunately, but there's still work to be done to make it appropriate for the age groups that use it and make it more safe. It's good to see that it's very much in demand, and that's why we need to do more work required by the Minor Baseball Association to be able to accommodate those age groups. And that's because there is a higher number of people participating in baseball. It's greatly increased. Is everything fine on this baseball point? We'll do a couple of sports, and then we'll go over it after. So for soccer, we had to change some fields to add... There's a question of how we're doing the line, so it's a question of surveying. So it's a much larger number of people playing soccer, that's why. It's also important to renovate the arena to foresee certain renovations to the pickleball court and the tennis court. There's cracks in both of them. And if we let it be, there'll be more deterioration, weeds, for example. And it's dangerous for the safety of people. More and more people are playing pickleball, so it's hard to meet the demand of these athletes. So we have to think about other fields. And what facilities we need to add. Next year, a consultant will be studying that to identify more than one sport and make sure that we have the necessary facilities to meet the demand. Yes, question, Janis Carmier, soccer. It was brought to my attention that this year, high schoolers have men's and women's, boys and girls soccer team, and they're using the soccer field. Are there other options? What are we going to do? We have 800 kids playing soccer in Shadia. We don't have much ground for them. We're trying to keep it going, but since soccer is resuming in the fall, it looks like that could be an issue. Yes, that is a sport that has taken, has become more and more popular in our community, and the facilities are there. The ones that are used, the school district has them. We have to maintain them, the city does. And if there are other facilities to be added, well, who would meet that demand? Is it up to the city or the town? Through minor soccer or... Currently, there's an essential collaboration there to meet the safety needs of young people who play soccer in 2025. We're always maintaining the grass. So we can bring in a company to help us regrow the grass there, but it's a challenge that we're going to have to assess. And see how we can answer that. Football, sorry, not soccer. There's football and soccer, so we have football and soccer. They sometimes play in the mud, right, or in the rain? And that's going to damage the soccer field, right? Be too bad to have a field that isn't suited to all these 800 kids who want to play soccer. I understand that football also has its place. Well, something to consider. You have to think about it. If we can find other spaces to create soccer fields, and we will do that. Minor soccer doesn't only use the fields behind the high schools, but also the other field. And also at Parley Beach, for example. They have too many kids interested for the fields that we have available, so that's why they keep on... Parley is not the best choice, but it's anyway, it is a field. I think we can be proud of having so many kids who want to play soccer in Shadia. It's a good sport. It's a sport that many people can play, because it's not costly. And when you see the number of people, young people who have registered for that compared to other sports, I think it would be good to start looking at something to accommodate that sport. Also, there's a field that's not just the one inside the track, but the other one on the next... We redid that field, and that is shared between the municipality and the province of New Brunswick. Essentially, we were trying to improve the grass, which was showing signs of wear. Emile O'Brien? Question about the ruts. How will that affect the players? Is that something that we're going to fix? Nobody's looked at this yet. We've asked a consultant to study the field and determine whether it's suited to the kind of play that's going on there. You can play tennis, but is it ideal? I don't know. I'm not an elite tennis player. So I can't really comment on that, but... But somebody's going to look at these fields or courts and tell us what we're going to do. It's not just the ruts or cracks. There's other things that have to be fixed on the tennis courts. Well... There's Playtech Enterprises in DEP, and they were able to fix the cracks for us in the past. There's people who have called me, and they're concerned about the state of the tennis courts, so they want to know if that's going to happen this year or when. It's not ideal to do it before the arrival of the frost, so we don't want to do it this year for winter play. That's what I mean. Yes, we have called the company, an expert, yes. And they give you a timeline for when this can be done. One of my employees made the call. We consulted them last week, because they've got, they're on that file, so we'll see how that goes. Thank you. We continue? Okay, let's do so. Addition of recreational spaces. We have new facilities that our citizens are using. The multi-sport surface is now completed. With the parking lot, we were working on building the bathrooms, the restrooms, and that will take place. We'll have that by the end of September. We haven't completed, entirely completed, the construction of this multi-sport space with all of the additions that we were supposed to make. Is that okay, Bob? But anyway, it's underway. Yes, it's coming right along. We can see the finish line ahead of us. Any questions? Let me just, we're going to use this surface soon with our fall festival for ball hockey. And we had good participation for their ball hockey program at the beginning of the summer. Councilor O'Brien? This multi-sport space, is it going to be used in the wintertime as well? Can it be used in the winter? Well, I thought it was supposed to be possible. Well, that was discussed last year. This, it is a three-season sport. Our weather no longer allows us to have a natural outdoor surface. We might have wanted to have a frozen surface, but you can no longer count on the ice. You know, in Point du Chen, they do it artificially. Wouldn't it be nice to have a second ice rink? There? It could be done. We would need the facilities, we would need staff, we don't have that. And we helped Point du Chen a great deal with their rink, so our residents can use their rink. Sure, I understand, but it seems it's a shame that we can't have ice there in the wintertime. It seems just, just have to, you know, do it, just pour the water in and freeze it. Do we need a motion in order to make that happen or? The facility is what it is in order to have to have the proper use of an outdoor ice rink that can withstand continual thaws and freeze cycles. It is feasible, but maybe you have it for a week, then you lose it, then you could lose it for a couple of days and then you get it back and so on. We have the indoor rink and that is what the staff is devoting its efforts to. Sure. But that is always booked, everybody, it's up to capacity. Sure, maybe we need a second one, okay, fine, but they have this one that they do in Point du Chen, why couldn't we do it too? I don't see why we couldn't have an outdoor one as well. Well, okay. It's snowed in anyway. I just don't have an answer for now. This, the way this was designed, it's a three, not a four-season facility. That is what it is. It's just not, it just can't do that. I'm going to let Janice Cormier speak first. No, you're the one. I wanted to give, give the mic to another Cormier, but well, okay. On bike, I'm going to go over and check out the facility. I mean, I have seen it and it's really nice. So I want to congratulate your team. This pickleball. There was a device. I have seen a device, it's sort of a surfacing device. What we did, does that work? You're talking about a vaptor? And what that is, vaptor? It absorbs the water, it's like a carpet that absorbs the water when you push it and then it goes into a tank. And then you just have to empty the tank. Companies use that for the tennis world cup, for example, so that's expensive. It wasn't, it wasn't really expensive. There's no, there's no maintenance, it's not $50,000, no, so it isn't all that expensive. No. I don't, I think if I recall, if memory serves, it's talking about $3,000, $4,000, $5,000, and it works? Yes. Because there's, the number of councillors had that concern, they wanted to know. If that was going to work and according to you and your engineer, yes, it does work. There were, just during prime hockey, we were able to, to, to maintain it very promptly. You were talking about pickleball, now pickleball, let's talk about pickleball. And you're looking for other fields, great, I think this is a sport that is starting to really catch on. Tennis might be going downhill a little bit. Might be on its downward slide, but pickleball is taking, is picking up where tennis is starting to slide. Now, my question, and this is councillor Boudreaux who mentioned this at some point. There is an agreement with the school district and the municipality of Shedyak, which with for exchanges of services or materials, supplies or spaces, school spaces with for example, with hockey. You know, they swap rinks. Don't you have anything like that? I tried to find that agreement, I worked with the director, EGR MFB, and the agreements don't specify anything like that, not that we could find. But we did assess the possibility of having more time in the gymnasiums because during our meeting, we looked at all of what we do. And the city wanted more time, more gym time. There isn't more though. Because the gym time that they could give us or that we might, might be entitled to is after school. During school, it's classes and after that, there's a number of extracurriculars. So that leaves us with badminton one night a week. There is the possibility to have more than one night per week. But that will depend on the season, the volleyball season and other para-school activity seasons. Three, we have three schools here, we have EGR, but there's two other schools here, right? There's the one in Shedyak Cape that has a gym, I've never been there, but, so I don't know what the gym looks like, but but there might be the possibility there. Maybe we should explore that as a town, it'd be a lot cheaper than trying to look for facilities or to build new facilities. I'm not saying we can't build new ones, but if there's already infrastructure, it might be worth looking into. And there's also the MSB school and and you might tell us the same thing, that the school is all booked up, even on the weekend. We have infrastructures, your lordship, which we should try to maximize. The same taxpayers are paying for all of this infrastructures. They, they, it's not a criticism, but, but let me just add this. In the summer, the schools are closed. And on the weekend, they're also closed. With MFB, we are already maximizing our partnership with our summer camps because we use the gym for the summer camp. And but but really, I, we just don't have the facilities we need. The our hockey, LGR hockey team has access to the arena regularly. Do they pay like everybody else? The EGR teams are using ice time that is free. Friday night? Well, after 5 o'clock, they have to pay their ice time like everybody else. And and if it's, if it's an unused time, then it's, then it's free. That's because it's during the school hours. I'm not saying we have to stop this, but but when we're talking about an exchange of services, you know, it's what's good for one's, what's good for the other. Maybe we have to balance that so our residents get the same value for their money. Maybe not. Paul mentioned this and this intrigued me. He said, here's an opportunity for our residents to use our infrastructure, district infrastructure more. And I don't want to stop the teams from each JR from doing this. If they're deriving some value from it, though, we should also get some value out of it. I don't know who has to bargain this. Maybe our town manager will have to do this, I know you're going to have plenty of work on your plate, but that's basically all I wanted to say. Thank you. Councillor Cormier? Would you allow me to add to the concerns of councillor O'Brien? If you're talking about this on the same subject? You're talking about the subjects that are in the report, right? Let, I want to talk a little bit about our new multi-sport park. Last year, we talked a few times about the idea of having, making it four-season. There were some issues about infrastructure that wasn't possible, we couldn't make ice, there were some problems with the boards. Where the cement wasn't entirely level. So, so it's not just temperature, it's because the infrastructure was built, not built up to a spec that would enable it to have ice in winter. I want to confirm that because we did discuss this at length last year and the council decided to buy a squeegee for the water because they weren't ready to invest more money in in leveling the concrete or in, or making this four seasons. Because if we did that, we would have to take it all out and do it again. I just wanted to confirm that that is what indeed happened. Further to our discussions of last No.
So let's continue in Municipal Park. Brewery Webster, that's a good thing you're there. So the Rotary Park. They received some new masts, it's behind the Big Lobster. There are also new exterior lights that we installed on the buildings. There are new lights to light up the Big Lobster. Those lights are up for summer, we're going to remove them to style them better, but this, they'll be the same style. Just in terms of lighting the lobster from the bottom rather than the height from up high. The lights are closed to light up Lobster. There's a landscape designer who will be working with us. The masts are already bought, shorter masts than the one behind, the ones behind the Big Lobster to add two flags. Whereas a lack of space for flags, we have special celebrations like gay pride, for example. I know that when we, as I was passing over or in the evening, I was driving, I saw the Big Lobster, but so, it was quick, but the Big Lobster did look pretty dark, had they already been removed? There's a logistics system with, that we're managing right now. The staff will sit to assess the next phases in terms of rebuilding, continuing the renovations of the Rotary Park. We're going to talk about signage in the park. Right now, there isn't any tourism information. It's the Rotary Club that installed all of it. Though, there is a Rotary sign next to the Big Lobster. And let's continue, you, we'll inform you when all of those projects are in their next phase for 2025 and 2026. They'll be discussed then. For Webster Park? The park is safe. We've done the proper follow-up. And now we have to improve the beautification of the park, just like other parks in the municipality. We need some shelters, quite a few places at the pickleball court and in many of our other parks. We're going to be focused on that for next year as well. We've received plans from an architect. It's been stamped. Somebody internally will be able to build them. And coming soon, there is Skuduk Park, the design is in progress. There's been a site visit done, once the design is done, it will be presented to the seniors' club of Skuduk. And then they will be, be able to identify any changes they would like to make to the park for young people. And an improvement plan for the skate park is currently being developed. A presentation will be made on this. I can't say anymore. It will be short. We can't, you can't, you can't reveal it just yet. Somebody in the community came to offer some help. Oh, that's great, councillor Emile O'Brien. I'm just curious, in terms of the John Lyons Park. Said in the report that there's lots of comments related to the Lyons Park design. A good way, bad way? There's a lack of facilities in the park. What type of facilities? For young people, for youth? And tourists, when they come, they want to have a place for them? We're going to be asking experts and we'll get to a better study on that one. Madam Deputy Mayor, Sylvie Collette Boudreaux, thank you, your worship. Thank you very much, Julie. I skipped over this, I want to add, when we developed the Lyons, John Lyons Park, I know it'll be part of the consultations with the experts. I was on that committee. It was very important for the people living around it and people participating in the committee that the structures, I'm just repeating, remain low, given the sunsets. It was built, that's why it was built, sort of kind of French, French stone style. It looked a little bit more like rock. They didn't want big posts and slides and such. It was in that spirit and swings, it doesn't, it doesn't mean you can't add anything else, but they also didn't want, at the time, it was a full committee, there were many people in the community. I have a lot of respect for them. They didn't want red and yellow colors, they wanted, not bright colors, they wanted earthy colors. Well, not too much contrast with the sunset. Just something, that's, I'm just putting that forward. And then people were pleased, but I can see that with tourism and other things happening in the region, that having a little more structure, some more seating, some more fun elements might be useful. It's, it won't just be picnic tables. Thank you, thank you very much for your report. So, let's continue with the porpoise. So in 2022, there was a plan. It was Verides who put this together. They did a design to bring back the purposes in this, in the downtown in parc Pascual Poiret. Main and Webster. Webster? And before going forward with that, speaking with the people internally, on Weldon, Weldon Street, oh my gosh. I can't believe, I said, I say it every day, I think, I can't believe I couldn't say it just now. So we identified other places in municipalities where the purposes would be well highlighted as well. But I'd just like to know your point of view. What do you think? In terms of assessing other areas in the municipality for, other than parc Pascual Poiret? Go ahead. Well, it could be interesting. Just on my, just relying on my memory here, it was a while ago. Point du Chen, I believe, was interested in having one of the porpoises. At, at that point, they were still in storage. I don't know if it's possible or not. They had raised that with me, basically, at one point. It doesn't mean we have to do it, councillor Emile O'Brien. Thank you, your worship, that's exactly where I was heading with my suggestion. Point du Chen Wharf, I don't, I can't remember who had mentioned it, it was somebody from there. There's a section of the wharf with information and historical information on Point du Chen. It would be a really love spot to have the porpoises. People travel there and they're on foot. And the young people like to swim in that end of the wharf. It would be a real asset for the wharf to have it out there. We should contact them to see what the what they think.
Si vous envoyez pas d'objection en identifiant différents endroits...
If you, if you have no objections to identifying other areas, as you might read in our report, Rotary Park, for example, next to the bridge, the psychopath in Pointe du Chen. And at the wharf, well, that would be another spot we could identify. We could ask somebody to design it. And from there, you could make a decision. If you deem it to be a good idea. If you put different places in, a little plaque that might refer to the, that the, there are two or two different spots. It encourages people to visit them all. Pointe du Chen is part of Chedec now. Councillor Ronald Cormier, your worship. Perhaps the John Lyons Park as well? Yes, it's true. It's a big park, lots of room. They're not tall porpoises, it should be fine. It's brown and gray. It's gray. It's not yellow, it's not, it's not red, it's not green. No. I, I, I really appreciate what you were saying. It's just that it might be a spot. I'm not against Pointe du Chen either. It's just an idea, that's all. Councillor Germain Galan, remote. I worked on the purpose project at Parc Presque-Aucoinier. I'd like to continue to see them there. The old mayor put them there. I think it's a good idea to leave them there. Because we've already worked on that project. We've worked on it with Denny. I would like to see them remain in Parc Presque-Aucoinier. Thank you. The only reason that they were removed was at the fountain. The fountain hadn't been working for three years. It would have cost, cost an enormous amount of money to put in the new fountain. You, you pretty much needed to break it, bust it up and rebuild it. So we opted to remove it and retain the works of art to put them back in, in public. It's public art, after all. It's another great spot, as we see in the drawing in Madame Berange's report. It would be beautiful. There'd be no problem. Thank you. Thank you, councillor Germain. Maybe Germain can answer. Was it only a project for the, from the town? Were the Rotarians involved? Or was it only the town? It was only the town. There was no other organizations involved? Now... It was a project for the first 100 years of the town in 2003. I, I think it would be important that it remain in the downtown if it was a Rotarian project. Well, the purpose is actually even at each other's name. I only remember one, one is named Webster. I don't remember the two other names. I won't put you on the spot, Paul. It was funny. There was a contest to name the porpoises. Well, that's great. I will continue. Rec center plan, we're continuing with consultations. So in September, we're meeting the education department in the schools. They were contacted. And after the education department, the following will remain inaudible. So right now, it's still step two. And step three will be evaluation of the capacity of the municipality. That's the next step in terms of our capacity to go forward with that project. And we can, at the same time, develop the business plan in conjunction with three and four. We can do those two things together at the same time. So that's, are there any questions on that? Councillor Emile O'Brien, thank you, your worship. Uh, inaudible? It's interesting that you say that. I'm pleased to hear it. Is somebody working on identifying some land? We're not there yet. Not there yet. The, the site is number six. We're right now at point two. Oh, I thought it was the same thing. Okay. The community need with the addition of a facility, it's more hours of maintenance. Where there's football. It's, that's a season that we're counting before. There's more baseball, more soccer fields. Now you're raising us with that for, for next year. It's another, it's more fields to oversee in terms of maintenance, multi-sport surface, the, where you now use the arena in the summer in addition for other programming and also for pickleball because they don't have enough facilities outdoors. We're adding to all of those facilities, we're adding other programming as well. When it's town facilities, there's programming from the town. There's more hours of maintenance. And we're continuing with special events. So that involves existing space, spaces. It's impossible right now to improve our facilities. We can just sort of keep them surviving. We can maintain them, do the necessary maintenance. And so in terms of improvement, in terms of landscaping or, or... For all of those, it's not possible. Normally, we have six employees. There, there's two in the arena, two in the multi-use center, two other in general maintenance of the, of the town. They'll often do an extra shift at the arena. If I have one person on vacation there, it's impossible to be able to offer services as it stands. I'll let you know of the hours in terms of maintenance. We're not talking about administration. In terms of the events that took place this summer during regular hours, we did 20 to 30 hours during the lobster festival, for example. In addition, for extra time, 22 hours or overtime for the two weeks after, there was, given that there were some delays, it was 48 hours of overtime. And not, there, we're not talking about the regular hours. The market is 64 hours, that's normal, just only four hours of overtime. Ocean Fest? There were 26 regular hours and five hours of overtime. So those are interesting statistics for you to have in terms of services to improve in 2025. It's impossible to do it with our current staffing with the number of people that we have on staff. So based on what I listed. So you have to be ahead of costs. You can't wait for them to happen. There's a tennis field that is deteriorating. Tennis court, rather, that is deteriorating. We'd like to be able to maintain it and get, get a bit ahead. Maintenance of sports fields. It has to do more than, we have to do this more than once a week. And right now, only once a week is not enough. Maintenance of sports fields during special events, it's hard, it's nearly impossible. There's a lack of staff. And let's say that one of the community organizations needs us for one of their sports tournaments. You have to be there as well. So that's continuous maintenance. It's not just in the summer with the arena, it's at all times. Improvements to outdoor recreational facilities, such as landscaping in our parks. This has to be improved for next year. Inventory additions to improve park usage. For example, shade shelters. This was one of our objectives for this year. We were not able to do it. Repairing our inventory, for example, barricades, tents, storage areas. We have to think of this. We have to take the time to think about it and improve trail maintenance. That's what I'm referring to in terms of maintenance, but there's lots of other things. Madame Deputy Mayor, Sylvie Collette Boudreaux. Thank you very much, Julie. One small note. There are some hours for the festival, the flea market. That doesn't come out of the coffers. There's invoices and bills sent to those organizations. It doesn't all come from the town budget. We build the organizations. We build the organizations. What I see? Everybody's spread a little thin. I think it would be important. I'd rather see us have more staff that would take better care of what we have than later have to replace what we have because we didn't have enough employees. I think that more employees won't be more expensive in the long run. I think. There's some things here I see that are very important. Barricades, tents, garbages that they made, we didn't make enough garbages. There are such beautiful garbage cans. There's blue, uh, containers for festivals or for the beer garden as well. It's not something that's beautiful to see. I, I'd love to take a note of that for our fall budget. That's why I'm presenting this report, so you'll be ready. If it's reasonable, I will support it. Councillor Germain, no, it's fine. I just, that's what I wanted to mention in terms of the budget. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
On est à la fin, on est à la fin.
No, that's, we're coming to the end. For your information, the office for the tennis club. We're assessing construction costs. We, we have, we have the cost for the design. Now we need the construction cost, materials and so on. I should be getting that within two weeks. The multi-sport surface, the parking lot. Last meeting is planned for tomorrow night. And that's just for the parking lot. The washrooms will be done soon. The scheduling for 2025 will be done through the development officers. Synthetic fields, there, we're looking at, assessing the spaces for a synthetic, synthetic field and, and we'll give you a presentation once the report is ready. Writing of the procedures for holding an event in our municipality, that is underway. That's being drafted and recognition of the community. Establishing the procedures and identifying categories. We have to think about what's going to happen with those walls. Cultural policy, we purchase one work from an artist every year. So what do we do with the work once it's been purchased? So we need to have a policy, procedures that indicate what we do with the works. Arcs, there, displays, naming as well. That also, we want procedures for all of this. Drafting of procedures for agreements with the community organizations to establish partnerships that also, similar to what, along the lines of what councillor Cormier was discussing with the schools, but we're going to do with all the organizations so that everybody is on an equal playing field and so it's fair for everybody. Great. Sorry about the length of this report, but there you have it. Well, it was like an update. Let's look at the recreational center again. There's eleven. Thank you, by the way, for the report, Julie. Good job. The plan for the recreational center. Who does what when? The list is here. Who leads on each of these things? Who's doing the funding campaign? Who's choosing the site? I won't go through the whole thing, but the reason why I ask is that our auto financing window is closing pretty quickly. And Julie says, and she's right, that she's busy. Is there a committee that is looking after this? Because it's a good list, I mean. But I'm worried about who's going to do these things. There's no timeline. I'm very worried that we would lose that federal money. I don't, I don't, I'm, I don't want to miss the boat by putting in our application at the very last minute. This is a hundred million dollar project. It's a big, big project. We consulted the public about it. Do we have any answers on this? Anyone have any answers? The only thing I can say, councillor Boudreaux, is that the steps that have to be followed were the ones that Mr. Bujot presented. And he, he had a timeline associated with each. Maybe this is just an abbreviated version. A bridged version. But we do have the timeline, that this should come from that. Yes, we are currently on time. Also, to answer your question, Paul, about the federal grant, I sent this to Virg to get an opinion from him about whether we're ready to apply. Because that was the problem last time, is that the town of Chedec wasn't ready. We don't have a business plan yet, but there is funding that we can apply for. For example, to hire a consultant. Well, we need to set up a committee for this because in my, my experience, we had a committee for the multifunctional center, for the town hall, for the fire hall. And we've talked about this for a long time and I, is, but I want to make sure that this timeline is realistic. You can't put together a business plan in a cup, overnight. I don't want to panic here, but this is pretty serious. This is a big item, big ticket. What's the next step? We have to assess the municipality's capacity. Hasn't been done yet? And when do we finish that? Well, I can go back to the timelines that I first sent it to you. But basically, to get back to the idea of having a committee, well, this is something we can certainly look at. The council tasked Mr. Bujot with developing that strategy based on his experience in Dieppe, where he also carried off one of these projects successfully. So that was the way he looked at it. He developed his timeline. There was nobody who knew when the funding would become available. And I have the same information, that there was funding available, maximum of 25 million per project. You have to apply within a certain window. This is only federal money, no provincial money. At least according to what I've heard. We weren't even expecting to get this, to have this money available. Cost for the consultants, so do we have any of that? Could this be in our 2025 budget, this project? Will we have information before then? Is it going to be 200 million or 2 million that we need to put in the budget to keep, to move the project ahead? That is something that will come out of our discussions with a consultant. We'll be able to then get our ducks in a row so that we can invest funding, so that we can do, for example, the following two stages. But yes, right, but when do we know that? Well, in November, as every year. That's, that's when the budget comes down. The last three or four meetings before the budget, right? Right, but then we have our, we don't, we don't know how much money we're going to need for that and everything. No. Maybe certain things can be done, but yeah, that's what we're looking at. You can't, you know, you can't expect it to, you can't do it before we're ready. Mr. Ryan? Infrastructure Canada. Says we're eligible for the 25 million per project. So, do, do, is the idea that we shouldn't apply for it? It's, it's, point is, I don't know what we're going to apply for in that envelope. Right, but it's going to, the window is going to open and it's going to close. Right. You know, we don't have any conceptual plan, don't have any concept. That is correct. No work, that, that work has not been done yet. We're still... We're still at the stage of consulting the community before we can come down with. Uh saying we want these items. We have to, this is what we, is this what you really want? Is what are the needs? Our community has changed too over the years. I'm sure you know that. Okay, the last time we talked about this was the consultant, Mr. Bouj, when he gave his presentation. When are we going to get his report? Are you gonna? Do we have any idea when his report is coming down? He's going to finish meeting with the groups. And once he has finished those meetings, he will come and present his consultation report. That's in October. We wanted him to come at the end of September, but he's not in the region then, so it's going to go into October. So then we can we can confirm that we're not going to apply for that funding. It's pretty clear. We'll never have the time to do it. It's disappointing, but. This is one source of funding. There will be others afterward. There are always funding sources coming down the pipe. You can't. This funding source never existed before. It would have been. That would have been nice if we could have qualified for that twenty five million. Yeah, but it's a competitive application. Not everybody's going to get it. Might everybody might be qualified, doesn't mean everybody's going to get it, but. Yeah, sure, it's competitive. That's right. Not everybody is going to get it. Doesn't mean we wouldn't qualify. Right, we might qualify, but we're not going to get it because we're not ready. We've been talking about this center for so long for years. We have a consultant. We haven't have any news from him. Um we're going to get a report from him in October. Okay, fine. Judy is doing her work. And every yet everything was in place for us to apply for this money and we're going to miss it. I'm just disappointed. That's all I am. It doesn't it doesn't make any sense. We talk and talk and talk and nothing gets done. A lot of other counselors are frustrated. We just don't know. Do I look like I'm not frustrated? I'm not saying I'm not saying you aren't, but I can feel the frustration. I would love to be further ahead than we are. But we're not, we're not. Yes, we're not, we're not. You can't just like hatch this project out of or build it out of whole cloth, you know. I understand this, but. Mr. Cormier. On this issue. Let's get things straight. We decided less than a year ago. That we want to look at the possibility of having this infrastructure. Have we talked to the Tim Hortons or anybody anybody else that with the idea that about the idea that it'd be nice to have a center? Maybe we did, but last year the council made a determination that yes, there might be interest in this. So we decided to hire a consultant. We did so. And I would also like this to move faster, but. Make an application when the application is already well, that's. It's a it's it would be that the government would laugh at us if we did so. Talking about a cap of twenty five million. I don't have the answer, but I want to ask the counselors around the table. If this is a hundred million project and we're looking for twenty five million, we still need seventy five million. Hundred million. Is the Avenir Center in Moncton. That's what it cost. Uh twenty fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. That's what it cost. Okay, that's so that's the kind of center we're looking at. We're a small municipality of eleven thousand, eleven million, sorry, eleven thousand people. So is this really a good idea? Do we can we afford this? I don't know. I hope that the next step will be to hear from our consultant to find out what this hundred million really means. It's fine to to make our case to Tim Hortons Foundation, our citizens, our residents will say. Our houses are over appraised and we pay too much tax. But at some point, we're going to have a certain amount of money, twenty million, whatever. Maybe more. What would be the annual payment? On a facility like this, but I don't know. But we need an infrastructure program. That is federal and provincial. Maybe the stars will not align. That is, I agree with you. Maybe they will. But as a person who is responsible for this money, we have to identify what we need. And we're always talking about shovel ready. We want projects that are shovel ready. We're not even we're nowhere close. There's nowhere close to putting a shovel on the ground. Yes, we have to do it. Yes, we're going to look at the budgets. But before I do anything, I want to know what's going to cost. And I want to know. If I'm if I go to Tim Hortons tomorrow and the residents and I. And I tell the residents, ask us if. Ask me if I if we're going ahead and I tell them, well, it's going to it's going to cost you twelve cents more. Uh I have to hear their answer. Will they want to pay that or not? Before we make any decision, I want to know I want to get my financial ducks in a row and. Because. I've seen plenty of financing plans and. And plenty of them didn't hold water. Sometimes the project has a overruns of thirty or forty percent. That maybe that's acceptable. I don't know, but. We have to be responsible for the citizens' money. Sure, there's people who want a pool. There's people who want an arena. Everybody wants something. Sure. And that's fine. That's what we're here for. Give our residents the services that they ask for, but we have to be responsible for their money. I need to be responsible for taxpayers' money. Uh in Shadyak, I it's fine, we can spend, but we have to make sure that our spending is supported by the tax base, by the monies that we have. Don't buy the Cadillac if you can only afford a chef. Um that's the way I've always operated in my own life and it's always served me well. Thank you. Counselor Roland Cormier, Counselor Paul Boudreau. I'm not asking us to spend a hundred million dollars. What I want to know is who's doing what when. If you look at number three, develop a business plan. That is exactly what you're talking about. What I want to know is who's doing what when. That's all I want to know. I'm not saying go ahead and spend the money. Whatever it is, but we need to know how much money it's going to cost. I just want to know who's doing what when. That's in the plan that we presented to you. Uh but to answer your question, well. Business plan. That's another consultants. Can't have one expert doing both of those things. Do we have a timeline for that? I don't want to answer off the cuff, but I have to look at the report that was submitted. Okay, thank you. Well, we can see there's interest in this, which is good. Counselor O'Brien, another question. Paul talked about the idea of setting up a committee for this project. Could we? Would you agree to set up a committee this evening? Uh the composition, the number, I don't have any idea about that. I haven't thought about it at all. And I have to propose it to the council members after all. Well, do you have a timeline? No, I don't. I'm not saying. But setting up a committee for a specific project, the committee can do the research, then they can make make sure that the the file actually gets somewhere. This is what we've done with all of our best projects over the years. I just. You're the mayor and you know, I'm I'm I would like to hear you say, yes, I want to set up a committee to move this project ahead. Um sure, I'm interested in doing so, but when will the committee be functional? When it will be ready to work? We. Have to depend on the consultants that are already working on it. I don't have a good idea yet. I don't know. All the details of that plan of what the consultant is coming up with. I I didn't say yes or no. I said I don't know when. Do I? Am I interested in a committee? Sure, I'm interested. Do I? Am I interested in a committee? Sure I am. Of course I can say that. I mean, it's not complicated. If that can bring some people together, it's not going to be a team of forty five. It's going to be a. It's not that big of a project, you know. It's an important project. All 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 it is a big project and all the projects that you are big, but we've been talking about this project for two years. Yeah, that's fair enough, but. It's not that big. Is it? How big is it? Just to hear myself again, hear hear myself over the speaker. Mr. Tom Clerk, we have the uh timeline for twenty February twentieth. Now, needs assessment is in September twenty twenty four. So that's basically taking place right now. The consultation took place in June. And now we're looking at a needs assessment and capacity assessment, and then we develop a business plan. So this was presented on last twenty, February twentieth by Mr. Bouj. So basically, everything is doing running its proper course. I just want people to know that we're not actually running behind.
Uh we might send him an email. Uh Council of Chabert, Chavari, take three seconds. So this is due in September, December. There's background work that's been done, but we're just not aware. Yes, so we'll be completing these two things in December. Remember in the summer, there was a strategic plan with all the consultations. People were called in one side and and Mr. Bouj did his public consultants as well. He's speaking to associations. He's following his timetable. He's following the timetable provided. We're following the steps. It's moving forward. Yes, the financing just was approved, but do remind yourself that it's twenty five million. Out of a hundred and ten million dollars. It's not quite a quarter of the budget. We still need to find the other seventy five million. There will be other projects. There's elections next year. Mr. Boudreaux mentioned it during the meetings that we had as well. Uh in the minutes, it's all indicated. So please remind yourself of that. The machine is moving forward and we're working as best we can with what we have. Thank you. Thank you for finding the presentation again. So second update. This is for municipal operations. Mr. McEwen, hello. Good evening to you all. Hope your summer was great. My update. Will be about the major projects that underway right now. Just give you a little update in terms of where we're at. The first is the Main Street uh project from Foch Bridge to Chesley. As you as you can see it, you can see with the updates that we have every week, the project is making good progress. We have completed. Uh we've completed two and a half, let's say, out of four phases. Works are pretty coming close to the intersection of Chesley and Main. And the other side of the street, we have piping for storm drains that we have to connect on the north side. We have less than a week's delay since the start. We're still on track. Uh to complete this fall. There's still about two months of work left, so keep that in mind. We're right now, we're coordinating with the contractor and our consultants in terms of the details of the final phases. Uh in terms of when we'll have those parts completed. Second project to discuss is an update on Bellevue Bellevue Heights and the extension of Bro Bridge. Things are going relatively well on that project. As you on the main street, if you look out there. It's going further and further out. There the progress, the underground work started on Main Street. In one shot, they made it to doing all of the works once. They don't have to come back three times, same spot. Their construction method is open trench. They're basically where they're up to the intersection. Uh or the roundabout that will be built. Uh in terms of that project, there was quite a bit of rock excavation, more than what was foreseen as part of the plan. So it did cause some delays. So we're about two, two and a half weeks delayed with that project. In both cases, this summer, there wasn't much rain. That did help. Uh the season did make good progress because of that. Third project to be discussed is the Fire Hall project. So you certainly saw as you're passing by that there's some pretty major work happening out there. This week. The footings and the foundations are ready. Quite soon, they'll be doing the backfilling. To level out the site and to start the project, there's a little problem that to do more excavation than foreseen. Uh given the soil conditions underneath. There was an old pit. On that site. It delayed things a bit. There's also be some extra costs associated with that. We're trying to see where it's all falling. But I'm confident that we'll still respect the budget. Uh things are going moving forward well. They expect to have the building closed when weather tight. Before the major cold and the snow the summer. As it is, they anticipate having the project completed late summer or summer or fall rather of twenty twenty five. And the next project that I'd like to give you an update on. The roundabout. Uh cul-de-sac on San Jose Street. We did acquire a land to complete a turnaround there. It's scheduled to start next week. It's a six-week project approximately. Right, it should be built this this summer, this fall rather, the sidewalk project. There were two. There we were rebuilding a section of sidewalk that was on Main Street. You probably saw it was close to the bakery in that area. That one is basically complete. The in terms of rebuilding the sidewalk. There's a bit of landscaping to do on the side. Uh and then for the new sidewalk project, that one is supposed to start next week as well. That is the bit of sidewalk on the Webster between Chesley and the blind, I do believe. And a section of sidewalk on Sackville Street, south of Bro Bridge. Heading towards. The fifteen. Highway fifteen. The Pleasant Street is basically done. They're just cleaning. Uh up some small details. Uh just a few details remaining. And. Ah yes, the office project here. Well, there you're aware, I'm sure. We moved a few departments. In the second floor building of the building. That happened a few weeks ago. Maybe we've been there for maybe three weeks now. So things are good. So that's basically it in terms of major uh projects. If there are any questions on that, I can accept your questions. Thank question from Madame Deputy Mayor Stivikle Boudreau. Thank you for your report, Bob. It's great work. I have a question related to the sidewalks. Or the how do you call it? The boardwalk, the sidewalk on Main Street where it was rebuilt. We've seen that on Bro Bridge as well, where you have the sidewalk and and lawn. It's a boulevard. Yeah, between. Especially on Main Street, on Bro Bridge. Yes, but. Given that there's lawn between the sidewalk and the curb and the salt and the. and the salt and the, and the uh, snowplow, it's never, they put back some lawn, it's dry, then a chance to even on Bro Bridge, anybody walking can see it. The lawn does not grow there. It's dead. It's full of cinch budge, bugs, full of that type of thing. I know the staff is stretched thin, it would be really nice to have a system in the spring where they could put on some fertilizer, I don't know what you could do to make it look nicer. It's very, it's not good-looking. We make something that looks good and then it becomes ugly. I know that people on Main Street, it might be different. Uh, just as much, we have the same problem at home as anywhere else. So there's, you go and there's a whole bunch of bad things around, could we study a, 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 a project? I don't want to add the budget, but can we just keep our things beautiful? It's a challenge, it's a good question. I don't have the answer. There's no answer to be had, I'm just trying to make compliments as, as the same time as I'm complaining. I'll leave it at that. Generally, landowners are responsible for upkeep of their lawn. This is true. It's the same problem at home. Having said that, some awareness raising of the former owners and new owners who buy, right? That's a good question. Counselor Budrill. In terms of the fire hall, I was going to ask about that, in terms of, we wanted to sign to add, to show the the drawing, architectural drawing. Uh, or the sketch, Sylvie mentioned it, we brought that topic to the architect and contractor, they submitted a sketch of the sign, we said, we came back, said, yes, it looks good, let's go with it. And to be honest, I haven't heard anything from them in two months, it's reminding me actually to check with them. Uh, thank you, Bob, thank you, Sylvie. Counselor Roland Cormier, thank you, your worship, and thank you, Bob. The sidewalks that we built were made out of concrete. Some citizens have asked me the question, I really don't have the answer. What would happen if we made them out of asphalt? Would it be less expensive and as durable? There must be a reason why we don't do it. But I don't have the reason, do you have the reason? I don't have the reason. I would imagine that durability is one of those factors. But it's a good question. It must be like half price, I would think, there's a difference in cost for sure. In terms of the bike paths, sometimes you see there's asphalt and cement. Well, somebody did that, maybe we're not paying for it. Maybe that's why they're making it, there are some instances where people are hard up, you just, and you do have to just do a bill of patch, you, you just do the asphalt because it saves some trouble. It's a good question. I would say it's a question of durability and that's why things are headed that way. But I'll ask the question. I'll ask around. I'm not saying that we should change. But if we can get one thousand foot of, feet of sidewalk instead of three hundred feet of sidewalk, maybe we're ready to cost to have it in asphalt. It's, I won't be deciding, but, but maybe we can get recommendations from somebody, they talk, somebody knows what they're talking about. There's also the minimal width, doing a sidewalk, I think it's one point five meters, six feet, asphalt spreader is, is not really made to go that thin. So when we do the multi-use, yes, they're wider, maybe for that, there might be something there. So that's a good question. I know that the sidewalk is less hot on a, on a dog's legs than asphalt would be, oh, that is true. Except if in the early morning, it's still cool. Counselor Peter Bro, your worship, I can answer that question. We did ask that question directly in Fredericton. The reason that they don't make sidewalks out of asphalt, it's for the blind. The blind who walk on the sidewalks with canes. They cannot identify a sidewalk if it is made out of asphalt. I know that there aren't many, but that's the answer that we received. You can, we don't build sidewalks out of asphalt, it is dangerous for people traveling. Uh, when they put the cane on the asphalt, they're lost. And they walk into the road, and that's why that came directly from the government. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Thank you to Mr. McEwen for that update. Item twelve, new business, nothing for this evening. Number thirteen, request for information from councillors. Uh, I've had a chance to ask many questions in terms of those updates, it might opened up, have opened up other questions. It's now the moment for other questions, Counselor Janis Cormier. I have a few items here. I do have a question. LGR and the lights, is, is that a permanent thing, what has been installed? For the, for thirty kilometers per hour, it looks permanent. The actual installation of the radar, yeah, that's going to stay there. That setting thirty kilometers per hour, it's not quite set or settled. It's meant to be programmed to just flash thirty kilometers an hour during school hours over the week. The rest of the time, it'll be fifty. That would be the trigger to change colors and send strobes. Excellent, that answers something. We'd ask we will ask to have a crossing guard. You, you see it. It's a good addition for safety uh, with respect to the school. Secondly, Habitat for Humanity. Do we have an update on that front, Mr. Palera?
No, not yet. But they're supposed to advise us when they find participants for the project. We haven't received any answer from them, I would think that they're still in consultation. Uh, nobody, or in construction. It's a great project for the municipality, I can check and get a report from Habitat for Humanity just to give us an update for the next meeting. I, I will take note of that. We were all invited to do some volunteering. We thought it might be a good team-building exercise for the council. Can we ask if there's something that we can do in terms of volunteer work? To go help out one day or something, when they're going to paint or clean. I think we did the opening, but we never received anything in terms of volunteering for Habitat. The houses are pre-made. There's, there's no onsite construction per se. It's a house. It's a Kent Holmes house, home. It's a duplex. So there was, we needed fewer volunteers in the community. However, I would throw out that challenge, if there's something for the municipal council, to let them know. But there's a willingness. Uh, the last thing we got, we got from them was a request to share their posts on Facebook to find renters for those two semi-detached dwellings. But Danny, we can check with the team, we're in constant, regular communication, if we have some information, we can come back on that. Now that they mentioned that they'd like the municipality become involved, if they need some volunteers to do something, I'd like to know. We'll send, we'll communicate with them. Uh, it's great. My last one is for Mr. Bob. I don't think you saw the email yet, I received an email, your worship, today. There's a few items for the Shadiac Marina. For the next meeting, can we get some updates? These items. It's the second access to the marina. Are we going forward in terms of keeping the second access point or removing it? Another item. That, uh, there's something between ten Lloyd and Pleasant, it's, it's thinner. It's more narrow, it's, it's a lot, it's hard for people coming out of boats to make the corner. Before, it was wider. That's one item. Third item that was brought to my attention is that I think there's a pedestrian crossing meant to be placed between Centennial and Pleasant. Uh, there was some discussion of having a three-way stop as well. I'd like to know a bit more. Why? Why are we going with a three-way stop? Especially in an area where, in Pleasant Street, there's not much circuit traffic. Uh, back and forth traffic with the marina. Well, I saw the email. I saw it just before the meeting. That's why I'm asking for the next meeting, I would just add that the last time I met the group from the marina. It was in July, I think, a few items were discussed, not solely those, but everything seemed okay, so. We'll do an update on that next time, thank you.
I didn't want to talk about Cornwall Road, it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to apologize uh, to the councillors because I, I wasn't able to put that on the agenda last week. I would ask the clerk to please uh, to put that on the agenda, the emergency exits for the Cornwall Road, yeah. Okay, Roland Cormier, yes, I have one item. We, as we all know, we lost a colleague four, five years uh, weeks ago, Mary Lloyd, Councilor Mary Lloyd. And I would ask anyone, someone to tell us, like I guess we have declared the seat vacant and there's a certain period of time. Traditionally, there are by-elections in the fall and the spring, right? December, yeah, yes. I hope we're going to do our work as councillors. We're going to rectify this. Be sure that we meet the deadlines so that people from Shadiac Cape have the chance to get, have a representative at this table as soon as possible. I hope. I know we're taking it seriously, but I, I just want to make sure that we know what we have to do. I would ask the clerk and the manager to, to make sure that we get it done at the next public meeting, because people from Shadiac Cape deserve to have their representative at the table. Following the death of councillor Lloyd, I took the opportunity to inquire. The province has confirmed, and I, and I will share this with the two co-GMs. That the, the deadline for to declare a vacant seat is in you know, the presidential elections are in October, so. Deadline is October twenty-fifth. So there's plenty of time and the clerk will write up the motion to that effect for the next meeting. So before we before we can start that. And once we have done that, the people from Shadiac Cape will be able to choose their next representative. Next one. Councillor Chavari. Talking about the building in front of the case because it was right on the sidewalk and I, I think I don't know if the bin, Ferrobin will be, spend, spend the winter on the sidewalk because uh, you know, then people move aside, you can't remove the snow the way we're supposed to, I don't know if it's due to what's construction, can you check out on that and see what we do about that because it is on the sidewalk right now. So what's going to happen with, in this winter, if it stays there? Can we move it, what's going to, what's the deal? Yeah, we can check on that. And the bylaw officers uh, checked it out, I'm pretty sure I know who it belongs to and we're going to follow up on that and make sure that it isn't on the sidewalk, yes, because, right, because the snow is going to come down and that's going to cause a big problem. I also would ask last week, we, we had our and sir, about Bellaire Street, right? Are we, do we have to have an in-camera meeting soon? What took most time is, well, I told you last week that we are waiting for the notice on the private road at Point du Chain, and we also were waiting for our new city manager to come in and we wanted to be able to put a bit of speed on that. And I made, I asked when we're going to hear about the private road in Point du Chain, and I haven't had the response back, so that's what I'm waiting for in order to organize the in-camera with the two pieces of information, the two legal, piece of legal counsel. We, so we didn't, I hadn't got the advice yet, so that it might not be before the next meeting, maybe only the following week. We're waiting for that information before we can move ahead. If we see that it's taking too long, then we could hold an in-camera quicker. And then get, right, and then, so that is basically, yes, we have that in our sights. Maybe, you know, we could bring, we're trying to do is bring in the lawyer only once instead of having to do it twice for two different files, that's right. Okay. Emil O'Brien? Thank you, your lordship, a couple of items here. Julie, you do such great work and I want to congratulate you again on it. Please don't take it, take it the wrong way, but you know, I need so many, so many questions, so many questions I have to ask you. Talking about the signage. I'm talking about a similar sign for the multi-sports facility. On that sign. Is there, what about, is there a timeline as to when that sign is going to be? We could recognize the volunteers on that sign. That's one thing. Will there be a section to recognizing, yes, there are three people who are heavily involved in that. And so it is very important to recognize their work. We discussed this. And absolutely, their names will be displayed. We, you can expect that, how it will be done, we want to make sure that it's done professionally. Um, we want a nicely, a nice design for that. When will it be done? In twenty twenty-five, we were out of funds for that, but yes, something will be done on that. On the sign itself, right? We will have a display of some sort, there will be something visual indicating that the volunteers were involved in this, they worked on the multi-sport surface. But not on the sign. I'm talking, talking about the main sign. Thank you. You're talking, Ms. Belanger, you're saying that you want it to be permanent. Uh, recognition, you know, you're not talking about the sign that will disappear at some point, no. What about the sponsors, will there be signs as well about them? As I explained in the report at times, it's hard to predict when it's going to happen. But things are moving ahead. The sponsors were not contacted for us, and some of them received some of the information, but we want to do a job that is nicely done. that is nicely done. And we want to be able to contact them with all the programming that we have developed, will have developed. And then we have to give them the opportunity to decide whether they're going to stay with us or not. And if they do and want to continue their contract, then we would simply renew the contract or we wouldn't give them one invoice for all the years that they missed. We would, we would just renew the contract and that would give them the visibility that was written in the contract. Follow-up on minor hockey in Shadia. Seven hundred dollars per child. Hundred and four dollars for the provincial tryouts, so eight hundred and four dollars all told. Have we considered giving discounts to kids from Shadia? Does that still exist? All kids get this discount of fifty dollars. They can, the parent can apply for it once a year. They can choose the sport that they want to. But they have to do it when they submit their application. The form goes to administration. Thank you. Harry McEnroy?
Getting legal opinions in camera orally. For example, on the position that the lawyers might have with regard to maintenance of private roads in Point du Chain. If that's presented orally in camera, a number of us might hear something different. We're not permitted to speak about it when we leave in camera. And it's, it's a, it's a high priority community issue. And I believe that we should get a legal opinion in writing. I understand that if there was a litigation underway and we were being given advice as to how to proceed, that obviously would be something that should occur in camera and something that we should keep to ourselves. But if we can't get a legal opinion from a lawyer in writing on the situation with regard to the private roads, then we don't have a legal opinion that's worth anything, in my view. So I just want that to be my position at least on that to be clear. Thank you.
Conseiller Paul Boudreau?
Paul Boudreau. I was waiting for a while there. Yes, thank you, Sylvain. I received your email about the report and I've read it three, four times since you sent it to me. Very interesting. I have a recommendation. I don't know if Julie or your lordship who are in contact with them, but who is responsible? That, that the next meeting, we talk about that? Is that what that is? No, I've been there, done that. So that's, so thank you, second item. The conference, Amundson and Fredericton conferences. Yes, I received your answers. Some people haven't responded at all. The choice was pretty clear. There were only two people who requested each one, so it's not difficult. Two for UNB, two for the other one, so. That's it. The hotel rooms were already reserved, but now we simply have to put a name on each room and that's that. Simple as that. Didn't have any. We have three motions. One has to do with the MFB crossing guard. Every year, we hire a crossing guard from September to June. As you know, for some years it was Mr. Maurice Boudreau. This year, Mr. Boudreau didn't necessarily want to continue to do that job. And so we had to announce the position and we are making a recommendation for somebody who can replace Mr. Boudreau. Assistant mayor, so could you please read that? Be resolved that the services of Mr. Claude Bujol be retained as crossing guard for the 2024-2025 school year. Be also resolved that the mayor and clerk be authorized to sign the agreement and that their remuneration for providing this service be set at eleven hundred dollars per month from September 2024 to June 2025. Moved by the assistant mayor. Joly Prey seconded. If I have properly interpreted your hand wave. Any questions about the motion? All in favor? All opposed? Carried. Next two motions. Tabled by notice of motion by Mr. Roland Cormier. Donc, he will give us the background and then he can present the motion. I will present the motion first and then I'll explain why. Okay, thank you. Whereas the territory of the town of Shadia has expanded to incorporate the regions of Shadia Cape, Skuduk and Point du Chain at the beginning of 2023. And whereas it is important to properly mark the territory of the town of Shadia to identify the new municipal boundaries. And whereas it is also important to point out that the new regions of Shadia Cape, Skuduk and Point du Chain are now part of the town of Shadia. Be it resolved that the municipal council mandate the administration to identify the best solution to install signage indicating the new municipal limits and the new regions that are now part of the town. Be it further resolved that the administration identify all details, including costs and visual aspects in order to come back to the municipal council with recommendations. Moved by myself. Moved by Mr. Cormier and seconded by Mr. Chavari. As you saw, colleagues, I took pictures, I don't know if you looked at them, of an example of the municipality of Haut-Terre, just an example. I think, you know, you arrive in Haut-Terre and you see this sign. Says, "Welcome to Haut-Terre." So when you come from Shadia Cape, it says Shadia Cape. And Shadia below that. Just an example. I'm not a graphic designer, but but I think it's important to identify the region. So the sign would say that the, that this, each of these communities now falls within the city limits of Shadia. Maybe we should have done this sooner. And if we had had more, more money. And I'm not trying to object or, you know, or be difficult. I know we have a special account for probably a couple hundred thousand dollars left in there, but that's not what the motion's about. I, I think the important thing is that we do it and we do it right. So the people from these places can feel that they're part of us and thank you, thank you for the explanation. So, Mr. Peter Bro. Concerning the signage, I totally agree that we should be putting these in place, but if you remember, we had some sessions for the strategic plan. At that point, we were discussing the idea of changing the two or three signs on the road, on the highway. And in the strategic plan, if memory serves, that was going to be reflected in there. Not necessarily the logo, but in the slogan, right? And I think all the signs should be reflected, even if you have to put temporary signage in certain places. But I think it should be uniform. The signs could be different, but there should be a uniform graphic signature so that because you know, you could have different signs, whatever, the temporary signs, but we're going to, we're going to have our new signs at some point. And people should see, when they see a sign, they should be able to recognize immediately that they are in Shadia from the look of it, not just from what it says on the sign. So I don't know if the motion needs to be rejected or how that works, but I'm not, I don't oppose the idea of signs, but I don't want us to spend a bunch of money on signs and then we have to replace them once we have the new graphics, you know, standard graphics for the town. Oh, there's an easy answer to that. It's already part of the plan. Since we discussed this in the strategic plan, this has been one of my priorities when I was when we sat down and Mr. Cormier brought us this, we found this very interesting idea and promising idea. And we said, if we adopt an image for that, for those signs, then eventually we'd have to modify the billboard that's on the highway when you're coming into Shadia. And this is also a concern of the council, the question of identifying the exits to say, well, there are a certain number of exits for Shadia. So this, or these are things that we can think about. If we go ahead with the recommendation, the reason why we wrote it in that way is because we want to be able to analyze the project and find the right way to do it and adapt this new image to the future billboard that we can modify on the highway. So this is all, these are things we've all been thinking about, already been thinking about. Do we have to do this as of this, because of this, from the strategic plan? Well, the image of the town of Shadia was changed in 2018. And I think it's and we don't necessarily have to have a slogan that to present Shadia to the people. I think, as you've all said a few times, is we want to welcome people here and and identify Shadia in the right places so people know what exit they need to take. So that is the idea. I hope that answers your question.
So you're going to make those signs and from that you'll create it? Keep the same visual that we have with the claw? And as you see on the signage for Paquetville in Haut-Terre, that's an interesting one. Nice visual for the new municipality. It's the same municipality as Shadia, identifying the region where we find ourselves. You can probably use the same type of visual element to bid welcome to people when they arrive in our area. You're not going to put a "Je me sens à Shadia." I, I, just to be, the directive last year was sent by myself and the CAO of last year. We have removed this from all of our publications. We're trying to avoid it. We're just using the logo, not the slogan. It's a very important thing for staff. Great. The idea of doing signs, they wouldn't be temporary to identify Point du Chain, Skuduk and Shadia Cape. These would be durable and permanent and they would stay there. So with that, all those in favor shall say aye. Contrary-minded, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. And the next point, fifteen point three, hiring consultants for the asset management program. Mr. McEwen will give us the background on this one. Thank you. So asset management. People know the term asset management. In the town, the last plan in terms of asset management that was created dates back to 2017. In 2017, the province launched some new regulations such that municipalities did this and they had to update their asset management. There was probably a program before, I don't know. It was before my time, but I know in 2017, there was a major update. And it put the town up and updated to the regulations at time. There's been very little care taken in terms of watching, keeping updated the assets, list of assets. How many years, how many, how much service life is expected from this infrastructure? So the, so in 2024, the province is launching new regulations once again that are even more stringent. It's, they're calling them phase two regulations. In this case, it doesn't look at values and the years of service life that you can expect from equipment or infrastructure. It also looks at the how critical the asset is. For example, a water pipe is such a level in terms of criticality. Drain on the side of the road, maybe less. So these things have to be updated and we have to look to the future to maintain that program. So what we've done here is we're approaching a consultant to get a quote to bring it to twenty, bring us up to 2024 levels. We have the information from the 2017 program. It will submit it as a start, but it's still a lot of work to do to enter all of the assets in a type of software and have a great full list of all of our assets belonging to the municipality. It was budgeted based on the engineering funds. We budgeted about a hundred fifty thousand dollars for those works. So we approached three companies. One did not provide a bid for a tender. Two were very close. The lowest is Eagle Engineering and Consulting. Their tender is for a hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and change, net HST included. And the staff recommends that we go forward with that one. Thank you for the explanation. Councillor Joly Prey, do you want, would like to read it? Thank you, Bob, for the explanation. I'd seen the recommendation. It was the town doing it. Now I see why it takes a consultant with the criteria that the province is asking of us. Fifteen point three, hiring of consultants, asset management plan. Whereas the province of New Brunswick is imposing new asset management measures on municipalities. Whereas to be in a position to adopt these new regulations and also to keep the plan up to date in subsequent years, the administration recommends hiring a consultant specializing in asset management. Whereas three firms have been approached for bids and two of them have submitted a proposal. Therefore, be resolved to award the engineering for the asset management plan to Eagle Engineering and Consulting for a value of a hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars and fifty-four cents, net HST included. Funds will come from account one dash two, three, oh, one, eight. Public Works Engineering Services, ISO move. Moved by councillor Joly Prey, seconded by councillor Emil O'Brien. Questions on the motion? I see a few. Councillor Roland Cormier, thank you, your worship. It's a tender for five, over five years, as I understand it? Yes. The price is based on updating the first year and the work for 2025. That's a hundred forty-three thousand. And after that, there's an annual maintenance around eighteen thousand for the years two to five to do the upkeep. I didn't see it. That's why I was asking the question. It's in, it's in the document. I can take it, I can draw your attention to it. If you have the PDF, it's included there. Bob, did you consider? Maybe it's a good idea, maybe it's not a good idea. Have you considered this? We have an engineering department at Université de Moncton. There are three, four, fifth year students or those starting their fifth year. These are people who want to be engineers. I think it's a five-year program. Maybe it's four. I'm sorry, it's four or five. It's generally five. Generally five. These are people who have skills. Have we ever thought, and maybe it's too much work for us, maybe that's why we don't want to do it? Maybe we're giving a chance to those young people? They would have the knowledge of these things. That's what they're studying day to day. Have we had that kind of thought outside of the box or is it really too complicated? That's a good question. This summer, in fact, we were approached by Université de Moncton. This summer, in fact, we were approached by Université de Montaigne for summer student programs to work for us. We decided that with everything going on and the change of staff, it was not a good time to do it. But for the upcoming years, I'll keep a little note on that in terms of checking into it, whether it's a good idea. In terms of hiring beyond that, I don't know. That was not considered. It could help the students because universities. I know it's a bit outside the box. I'm not saying that we should do this today, but maybe, maybe it's not a thing that can be done. Maybe you need more of a big brother approach, but it could certainly help those people. And maybe even people within the municipality who are doing that training as well. It's certainly that there would be a lot of work and a lot of handholding, but something considered. Your worship, if we do approve this, are we approving the eighteen thousand per years, per year for the next five years? It is part of the contract, the contract, I dare say. Yes. Yes, in other words, yes. They can't start the job and not finish it. Sorry. They're starting and finish it. I was understanding that we're updating it. If I'm understanding, am I understanding correctly that they were updating project? Their assets are updated up to a certain date. That's what it's worth. That's what you said. Yes, and it's exactly that. And next year, in terms of what we do in terms of infrastructure that will go down or up, we're going to calculate based on that. Am I right there? That's, that's that. I wouldn't necessarily say that we're locked in at a hundred percent after first year. Let's say we're not happy what we're doing. We can, we can't, we don't have to say that they're done. And the reason I'm asking the question, my suggestion, perhaps it might be easier. I'm not saying that you should go there. If you look into it, you'll decide. But thinking outside the box, it might, it might be an opportunity to help our young people. And if we can help them, I'd rather help young people than our consultants. That is my personal opinion. Thank you, your worship. Something, it's an interesting idea. We have to make sure that it meets the standards of the province. Will it cause a problem or not? The staff can assess that. Counselor Paul Boudreau. Yes. What, I find a bit tiring here is that New Brunswick is imposing, they are imposing. Roland is right. It'll, it'll cost two hundred forty-two thousand once it's done in five years. Can we get help from the province, given that they're imposing this and we've just invested a quarter million? I don't know if we can speak to our local MLA. We didn't invent this. This is imposed upon us. And it's not only Chediak municipality, as I understand it. We can certainly have a discussion. I don't know if we can further pursue this. That's all. Thank you. Something to explore. Great. I can answer the question. The reason that the asset management plan is necessary, it gives the province, well, it removes political decisions and it replaces it with needs-based decisions. The importance of the asset management plans, it makes a shift to a need, between shifts to a want and a need. When the province wants to impose a criteria, you also go ask them for money for their project. So they want to contribute to viable projects that are necessary, not just based on political will. That's why necessity of the asset management plan came into effect with the gas tax fund. It's now the Community Development Fund. The fact that it's mandatory, in fact, it's become a tool, an exercise in identifying the needs and rather than the wants. Okay? That was an easy one. Battling a thousand. Counselor Peter Bro. Just to clarify in terms of assets, Mr. McEwen, are we talking about trucks, et cetera? Buildings, that type of assets? All of that and the infrastructure, the roads, the piping, the roads, the buildings. So the pipes will be considered in the study? So the study will show that the pipes, let's say, under the sidewalks of Main Street, service life is such and such a service, a number of years. Yes, it helps to establish priorities for future projects. Great. So it was moved and seconded? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor shall say aye. Contrary minded, nay. Motion carried. Thank you. And next is sixteen, appointment to committees. It's an appointment to the environment committee. This was a proposal of Counselor Roland Cormier. And I'll allow him to read the motion and give the background for it. Thank you, your worship. Be it, be it resolved that the municipal council appoints Ms. Danielle Routier to the municipal environmental committee. Madame Routier is here tonight. I will move it and I explain why after. Moved by Counselor Rena Cormier, seconded by Counselor Jean-Claude Bertin. Thank you, your worship. The basic reason for the, is this. I was approached by citizens who thought that there weren't enough people representing the municipality on that committee. There's one citizen from the municipality on that committee. There's one citizen from outside of the community sitting. I'm not questioning their capacities, the capacities of those two people. The citizens who spoke with me thought that it would be important that there at least be two people from the town of Chediak participating. I know that there is one counselor. Mr. Lloyd was no longer there. I presume that his worship will appoint someone else. I know that Madame Cormier is there. I think it's just the right thing to do to give a bigger word to that committee. The committee will come up with a recommendation or not. And then the municipal council will either declare itself in agreement with the recommendation or not. And I think that putting one more person on that committee, we're only, we are listening to our citizens and I don't disagree. And that's why I brought it forward. Oh, great. And I will just say, yes, Counselor Lloyd will be replaced, but we have to declare a seat vacant. It's, that will happen afterwards. Any questions on the motion? Otherwise, all those in favor shall say aye. Contrary minded, nay. Motion carried. Thank you very much. And it's number seventeen. It's an adjournment. Your worship, before we adjourn, it's just that Counselor O'Brien said that was going to do a motion about something in two weeks. Usually, as Counselor, Counselor Peter said that he was going to do a motion that we would speak about Cornwall. That means that Counselor Peter will talk about Cornwall. That's fine. It's just like I said that we would. Counselor Emil said that he was going to talk about something. He said that he spoke to the clerk, but and Counselor O'Brien has the right to speak about whatever he wants to speak to. If you think he wants to speak about something in two weeks, he has to identify today that he wants to talk about something. Because I'll be the first to say, you said, you never said anything, but you don't have the right to talk to us in about two weeks. So encourage to tell us what you want to talk about, because I don't want to get up and say that you don't have the right to talk about it. No, but you wanted to do a notice of motion. That's why I'm asking the question, your worship. I appreciate the point. Now allow Counselor O'Brien to give the topic and the big, the overall, well, this is adjournment. It's not the time for notices of motion because it wasn't on the agenda. Mr. Clerk, well, I can say, we did discuss a bit of it tonight. It's about the multi-sport surface in terms of posting the images on that site. We're trying to find a solution. We're going to work with Counselor O'Brien to try to present that motion. It's really related to that. It's related to the multi-sport surface and identifying the builders of that place. Did you say everything? Inaudible. I propose adjournment. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you.